This meeting of the Tyler ISD Board of Trustees was previously called the order. We do have a quorum and the meeting has been duly called and a notice of the meeting has been posted and the time and manner required. Thanks everybody for coming out tonight. We are reconvening from executive session and as always, we'll start out with a prayer and the pledge of allegiance by Mr. Martinez.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we love you. We thank you for your blessings. We thank you for the opportunity to gather here today and represent our community. May everything we do begin with your inspiration and continue with your guidance. We come to you today asking for wisdom and understanding. Please fill us with your grace as we make decisions that affect our students, teachers, and community. Lord, ask that you help us to be models for our children and students. May they see us as loving and forgiving, peaceful and just, compassionate and generous, and full of hope. In our time together, unite us in our vision, strengthen our purpose, and be inspired by the dreams we have for our schools. And please allow our words and actions to always reflect your message. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Martinez. We do have some action coming out of executive session and it relates to the HOG Middle School principal, Dr. Crawford.
As y'all know, we took action, or y'all took action. We placed Dr. Kristen Walls at Tyler Legacy High School, who was the sitting principal. Did create a vacancy for us at HOG Middle School. And luckily for us, we've got an up and coming, rising star that we're bringing to y'all for consideration tonight. He's a Tyler ISD product. He spent the last four years as an assistant principal at Tyler High School. He also taught at Stewart and at Bolter. And also a state champion for one of our high schools here as well back in 2004. So we're excited about bringing y'all, Justin Simmons, as a recommendation for the next principal. It's not yet. They have to take action on him first. Certainly want to bring y'all, Justin Simmons, for recommendation as the next principal at HOG Middle School.
Mr. President, oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Yes, no, go, let's go ahead and take care of that. Go ahead, Mrs. Atkins.
Mr. President, I would like to make sure that the board agrees to appoint Justin Simmons as the principal of HOG Middle School.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? As have it and the motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Simmons. Come on up and say a word or two.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you Superintendent Dr. Marty Crawford, Board President Wade Washman, and other distinguished members of the panel. It is with great honor and a privilege to stand before you with gaining a school like James HOG Middle School. It is because I once was a student in TISD that I had the rich experiences going through schools, playing football, and seeing a lot of teachers, that I knew what it was like to have a rich educational background. So it's teachers like Amajin Brown, who was my second grade teacher at TJ Austin, my English teacher Julie Haley, and my math teacher Bobby Schroeder, who I had at Hubbard Middle School, who encouraged me and just taught me, hey, just because you have one bad day, that doesn't mean you, you know, the rest of the days will follow like that. It is with honor and I'm just, I'm forever indebted to this opportunity and I'm thankful and I can't wait to get started. To the HOG Nation, you're receiving a principal who's ready to work, who's ready to pick the pen up and continue to add his success stories to the book of HOG. With that being said, HOG Nation, rise up and tusks up.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons.
We know you did a fine job over there.
Thank you all.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Simmons, real quick, before you, before you sit down, you have some special guests in the audience tonight that you'd like to introduce that are here with you?
I do, I'm sorry.
Okay.
The emotions, I mean, everything that I was going to say went to the wayside. I'd like to recognize my beautiful wife, Kim Simmons, principal at Dixie Elementary. And I have, go ahead. And I have my mother with me, Sheila Jones. I have my stepfather, Tyrone Caldwell, in attendance. Thank you for being here, guys.
All right. Thank you, man. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Next, we do have some public participation. And Terry Bonner, you're our only speaker tonight, so go ahead and come on up. Good. How are you?
I'm all right. Just thank y'all for having me. Couple topics I wanted to address, well, a few topics I wanted to address tonight. Looking forward to getting y'all some literature in your inboxes here within the next week about our idea of what's going on with the discipline here in Tyler, Texas, with, as it pertains to the school district. Also, again, just going back over, we're kind of interested, even though the bill is languishing in, 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 languishing in whatever right now, languishing in the
Legislation?
Reform. In the legislation right now about CRT, we're just definitely interested in how it will or will not affect TISD. And if it does, just public opinion, if it does affect TISD in any kind of way, kind of proves it true. But anyway, I digress on that. And my main topic tonight will be the redistricting process, which I understand is a presentation about tonight, but I just wanted to kind of point out a few factors about redistricting or the idea of redistricting. I noticed that we didn't move the schools. I also am wondering what attendance zones shrunk significantly to warrant, to warrant this redistricting process? And what demographic are we going after specifically to fill a void for as it pertains to the redistricting process? Now, again, I told you about the public stigma or the rumor mill. Now, it's thought in the public that somehow, some way, one demographic is leaving the district and the redistricting process is trying to fill in those voids with black and brown students. Hopefully that's not true and we'll see that in this process. And also, just to, just to add on to that, wondering what exactly this redistricting process will help as it pertains to the college readiness rate of black students, which is at about 4.5% has dropped significantly in this district, which means that we are graduating students at a ninety-some percent rate, but we are just graduating students. They are applying for college, but once they get there, are having to take remedial classes, which cost a lot of money and a lot of time. Our students are not college ready. How will this redistricting process affect and help black students? So interested in seeing your presentation. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you. And I will go ahead and tell you, this redistricting that's, that's on the agenda tonight is for mandatory every ten years for political boundaries. So, yeah, so that, that's what's going on with this redistricting presentation tonight. And the other redistricting that was done was in 2016 ahead of the 2017 bond and we had about, I'm going to say thirty community meetings leading up to that at all these different schools. And, you know, we were building, building the new, new middle schools, you know, you had Three Lakes, and then we had another bond coming up after that, so, to balance the district out. So we could put kids in those schools that didn't have a lot of attendance and re, kind of balance the district out. So, anyway.
I'll definitely note in your response to my presentation.
Okay.
That's on record, sir.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I just wanted to make sure we're talking about the same redistrictings.
We are.
Okay.
Okay. All others, you know.
All right. Okay. So now we have a presentation from Bickerstaff Heath Delgado Acosta regarding redistricting for the 2020 census data.
So, Mr. Washman and trustees, every ten years, obviously y'all know the census comes about and everything from congressional lines all the way to state representative and state senator lines, all the way down to school board member boundary lines, if your school system has any form of single member district. Some, Tyler ISD has, obviously all seven trustees are part of a single member district. Some school systems have, if you have seven on the board, you may have two at large, you may have five single member districts, or large urban districts have nine single member districts typically. But with us tonight, we actually have via Zoom is Mr. David Mendez with Bickerstaff Heath. He has intimate knowledge of Tyler. Not only does he do the Tyler ISD every ten years, he also does the Smith County and he also does the city of Tyler. So we have a lot of institutional knowledge with Bickerstaff Heath as well as, you may have a different board that goes through this every ten years, or different city council or different commissioners court. So Mr. Mendez is actually going to provide this, this presentation via Zoom from his, from his home in, in the Hill Country. Mr. Mendez?
Dr. Crawford, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay. Trustees, Dr. Crawford, Ms. Orr, thank you for allowing me a few minutes this evening to kind of catch you up on the redistricting process and get you, and answer some questions you may have about that. I've got a short presentation for you, but before I dive into that, I want to explain, since most of the board hasn't been through, through a legislative redistricting before. The reason we're doing this is, as Dr. Crawford mentioned, the TISD school board and district is elected from single member districts. So like the, like Congress, like the Texas Legislature, like the Tyler City Council, or like the Smith County Commissioners, you each represent a segment of the populace of the Tyler Independent School District. And so when the census comes out, the Constitution requires that we look at the growth in the Tyler ISD and then of the population, the total population, and then we want to make sure that a roughly an equal number of persons live in each of the seven trustee districts. So the redistricting that we're talking about here tonight and what we will undertake this fall relates solely to the territories from which the seven of you guys are elected. And so it doesn't have any impact to go, to, to address the question raised by the speaker this evening. The redistricting that we're engaged in will have no impact on the attendance zones from which the children, the students of the district attend the particular schools. That obligation of dividing or sending children to particular schools is your obligation as well, but it is not impacted in any fashion by the census release and by the one person, one vote requirements that we're dealing with tonight. So I wanted to kind of point that out and I have a section at the back end of the presentation for questions that you may have, and so I can elaborate on some of this. But I really appreciate, Dr. Crawford and, and Ms. Orr and I have been monitoring the census and we wanted to, we had decided earlier in the month that we needed to kind of get you guys ready and primed for this fall for when the redistricting data comes out. Mr. Kevin Boe has been very helpful today in getting me set up for this presentation. So Kevin, will you start the first slide and we'll kind of jump into what we're doing? So again, I'm David Mendez, I'm with Bickerstaff Heath Delgado Acosta. I've been doing redistricting of the Tyler Independent School District trustees since 2000. So I redistricted the board, seven districts back in 2000. We did it again in 2010, when the 2010 census came out, and we are now expecting the release of the data. And so Kevin, if you will move to the next slide. What I'm going to do tonight is give you an update on the census data release. For the first time in the history, the 230 years that the United States has been taking the census, the release, the data is not being released in the same timeline that it has historically. And that impacts you guys in a very important fashion. It impacts the city and impacts the county, and so I'm going to kind of lay that out tonight for you guys. I also am going to provide an overview of the redistricting timeline that we're going to use for, for the, this process. And it takes into consideration some legal changes that have occurred during the session, during the last decade. So, and then at the end, I'm going to, like I said, let some time to address any questions you may have. So Kevin, if you'll move to the next slide, what I want to point out to the trustees is that the data is typically, we usually obtain the data by April 1st of each year and we would already be undertaking the redistricting process during the summer at a very leisurely pace because what we're, you know, we would normally have more time to do this. But because of COVID and some other problems with the prior administration, the data was not released in a timely fashion and they're not expecting to have it released until about September 30th of this year. The basic data that will be released is similar to, if not identical, to the type of data we got in 2011. It's just going to be later. So Kevin, if you can move to the next slide, what I want to point out is how this impacts you guys. You have three trustee districts that are up for election in May of 2022. So the filing period for candidates that are going to run in districts one, three, and six in 2020 for the May elections, they actually can begin filing applications for candidacy on January 19th of 2022, and that period extends for about thirty days from that. So for, for, what it's going to require us to do is to accomplish our evaluation of the population changes in the school district before, so that we can implement those new districts, if we make any changes to the districts, we can make those prior to that January deadline. And it means we have about ninety to a hundred days to accomplish the project. So Kevin, if you can move to the next slide, what I want to point out is while we're going through this at the school district, we, the city of Tyler, which is on the same election schedule, will also be going through their redistricting. They have a different number of districts. They also have a different territorial boundary than the school district. So while we're going through that over at the city, and I did a similar presentation for them at the beginning of this month or at the very end of last month, and they're, they're getting ready to do the same thing. And the county commissioners will be reevaluating the population of Smith County throughout, throughout the county to make sure that the four county commissioner precincts are done as well. They're on a different timeline and they have to be done by mid-November. So, gosh, if we have to be done by January, those folks have a much more demanding schedule right now and we're looking to see if the legislature can address that problem as it, as it moves forward. But what I want to, the takeaway from this slide is that we have a compressed redistricting timeline to deal with. So Kevin, if you can show us the next slide, what I wanted to do for the trustees tonight is just assure you that we're waiting for the release of the data. As soon as it comes out, we're going to prepare an initial assessment to show you what the 2020 population is among the seven trustee districts. And if it's out of balance, we will of course then bring you at that same meeting some guidelines and criteria and a timeline for accomplishing the read, the readjustment of the boundaries. Because the way you fix the imbalance is by changing the territorial boundaries so that a district that has too much, that is overpopulated, would lose some territory to a district that has, that doesn't have enough population. So the, how do you figure out what the ideal population size is? You take the total population of Tyler ISD based on the 2020 census, you divide that number by the number of trustee district, by the seven district, and then that's our ideal district size. And we're shooting to get within ten percent, in a mathematical, the formula is a little more complicated than that, but within ten percent between the most populous district and the least populous district. And so how we'll accomplish that is you will adopt some guidelines and criteria for accomplishing this in a legal manner. In the past, a lot of the process that we did was guided by Department of Justice requirements for pre-clearance. We would, every school district in Texas that had single member districts would draw them up and then we'd send them to Washington to have them reviewed by the Department of Justice under the Voting Rights Act to make sure that they were, they met the legal standards. That requirement has expired based on a Supreme Court decision during the decade. And so whatever districts we adopt at Tyler ISD for January will not need to be reviewed in Washington. But the process, the legal requirements, other than the DOJ review, the legal requirements remain roughly the same. And so I'm going to be proposing rules and criteria for how we go through the redistricting process that makes sure we adhere to the constitutional and voting rights requirements. So once we know we're out of balance, then I'll prepare an illustrative plan for us to start with. And then Dr. Crawford and our team at the district will help set up a series of work sessions and public hearings for you so that I can, we, we're going to, in a, in a setting very much like this, we're going to put up a, the map up on the, on the wall like this with charts showing the population of the district and, and we'll go around the dais. And this is the way we did it in 2011, is we had workshops at which we fine tuned the adjustments to the various districts. So we would have a work session, we would develop some illustrative plans there, you all would adjourn that meeting so that you could deliberate on those and talk to your constituents and let the citizens see them. And then we come back in this, in, in further work sessions to refine your plans. Once we get toward the end of that process over the ninety days, we would have a public hearing to receive comment so that you can then take public criticism or, or support for those plans and get it and put it into your plan. And then we adopt and hopefully we'll get that done in time so that the county can implement it and conduct your, your May elections. So that's in a nutshell, an overview of how we're going to do it. We suggest the work sessions because we want to be transparent about the process. Each board member obviously knows their district intimately. You know if you've got to give up some territory because you've got too many citizens in there, which, how that territory might affect your neighboring districts. And so you guys, as the actual elected board members, are in the best position to guide us in drawing your districts. So that's how we've done it in, in the last two cycles. We've done it in, in these type of settings with work sessions. I envisioned that it might take one or two of those sessions to go through, to refine it, to a point where you like it. And we have had in past decades, one or more public hearings to receive public comment. Of course, you could always have public hearing at the beginning of each work session just to kind of have a running dialogue with the community about these issues. Again, the only things that will be redrawn are the seven election districts from which the seven of you guys are elected and we don't have, this will in no way impact the attendance zones. That's what I have, Dr. Crawford. Is there anything else? I mean, you watched my other presentation that I did at, at the city and you've been through this before. Are there any other thoughts you might have that you want to pass on to the board at this time?
Possibly, David, our counselor, maybe want to, what are some common other misconceptions whenever you're going through this? Because I know you've got a lot of rhetoric out there in the media because it all stems from congressional lines and things like that. Kind of weigh in on some of those misconceptions or confirmations about this process and the board's ability, the district's ability. I don't want to say gerrymander, but that is the common term that is used. But what are some of the things that this board may, especially along the lines of maybe racial percentages within their districts, et cetera, and how much adjustments that they can do in those factors? So just maybe spend a little time with that before the board, before the actual trustees might start talking, asking you questions.
Great. I appreciate that because the, among the criteria that are traditionally used for redistricting, there, there is reference to racial composition, but it's very, very limited. And let me just explain the limits of that. The Voting Rights Act of 1965 allows the citizen protections and in particular, people that had historically been discriminated against. These would be African Americans or Hispanics or Asians or other classes of individuals around the country that had been politically neutralized by gerrymandering or by other kinds of processes. So the law, the election law under the Voting Rights Act and the Constitution requires that we recognize that when we draw these districts, if they have, if a district has a sufficiently large and geographically compact minority population within it, when we make adjustments to increase or decrease population within the district, we have to be cognizant that we're not adversely impacting that, that protected minority group. And so we will be, guide you, there, these legal principles are laid out in some policies that I'll present to the board. And so we will be very, we will be monitoring the percentage of African American or Hispanic in, in Texas. Those are the two primary groups that we, that are measured by the courts. And so we will be, we will be measuring the levels of these populations within the existing districts and making sure when, whatever adjustments you make to rebalance the districts do not impair the ability of protected minorities in the existing districts that are there. And that is, that's the limit of looking at race because the corresponding principle on the other side of the coin from Shaw versus Reno standpoint, this is a constitutional case from 1996, that says that an undue examination or reliance on race or partisanship or, or things of that nature that impacts, that adversely impacts an Anglo voter is also challengeable. So you're walking a very sort of delicate tightrope between protecting the rights of minority voters under the Voting Rights Act, but not overrelying on race to draw the districts. So what we try to do in drawing electoral districts is to make them make sense in terms of Tyler ISD. What you want to look at is not so much what the racial composition is, but do the voters who are voting in your trustee district, are they all of, have a community of interest with a particular elementary school or with a particular middle school or particular high school? And that, those are the kinds of And that, those are the kinds of things, because the guys that are voting for you at the elections or voting to elect the trustees are the parents and persons of voting age who are trying to elect leaders to this dais here that can build better schools or make sure the boundaries for the attendance are in fact copacetic with their interests. So that's kind of the communities of interest you should be focused on is, does it make sense as we're adjusting the boundaries to move a certain part of the community from District 1 to District 2 or District 2 to District 3 or whatever because, to balance population, but at the same time meet these electoral principles? And so race does come into play, but it is only to that limited extent of not adversely impacting the ability of African-Americans and Hispanics in our case here in Tyler to elect candidates of their choice to the board. I hope that addresses what you wanted, what you were going at, Dr. Crawford.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mendez. I hope you're doing well. I'll open it up to the board if anybody has any questions about, preliminarily about this process or comments. Seems like everybody has a fairly firm grasp on, on the deal.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Mr. Sherman, what I would suggest is maybe I will circulate a draft through your legal counsel of the types of policies we have adopted at Tyler ISD over the last two decades. Because what I'll be suggesting for, in the fall, when we start up this process in a couple of months, will be very similar to what you've seen in the past. And if I can work up, I'll work up a draft of the guidelines and criteria for redistricting so you guys can start digesting that, if you will. And then show you how historically we've used those over the past decades and to build and protect our minority districts throughout the school district. And then that way, when we get to September, you guys have a working knowledge of what the kinds of policies are we're looking at.
I think that would be good.
That sounds fair. Everybody's nodding their head and that would be good. I do appreciate your presentation. And unless anybody has anything else for Mr. Mendez, thank you and have a good night.
You're welcome, guys. You all have a good meeting. I'm going to step away from the meeting then and I'll follow up with Dr. Crawford as we proceed. Thank you.
Okay. Appreciate you. Okay. Just a refresher, what normally takes, or the time allowed is a six-month time, has been compressed into two. So just kind of want to make sure we publicly state that one more time.
Okay. Okay. Duly noted. Thank you. Moving on down the agenda, we have approval of minutes for June 3, June 10, and June 21st meetings. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I move that we approve the minutes of the 3rd, the 10th, and the 21st as they're written.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Nation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? As have it, the motion carries. Now we're going on to our continuous improvement in student outcomes. We have a certifications update for CTE, goal 3.2. I think we have Mr. Brown coming up.
Gary Brown, Executive Director, College and Career. Will be making the presentation. We've had a pretty good run over the last five years or so and it seems like we're still continuing that run, Mr. Brown. And proud to have you up here to present this information for us. It does include the class of 2020, some of does, and some 2021.
A little bit of catchment on 2021.
All right. So we hope that Jackson Crawford contributed to that 2020 data that the district gets graded on. All right. Okay. I think he took care of his business. All right, Mr. Brown.
I have four presenters, Dr. Crawford, trustees. I appreciate the opportunity. I have two shared data about CTE certifications. We've got historical data and we've been the past year looking at. Just a reminder, and I know we have a good audience and people are fully aware, but when we talk about college, career, and military rating, the college rating is a component, obviously is the AP exams, dual credits that students take, SAT, ACT, ESAT tests, all of those indicators.
Make up that realm. The career rating this piece specifically speaks to CTE certifications and certificates that students travel to earn while they're in high school. And then of course, the third component, the military rating this are the actual enlistees in the United States Armed Forces. And so for the purpose of this goal and this specific strategy, we're going to look deeper into certifications specifically in that particular indicator. Am I not on? I can't tell if they're, switch out.
Get it closer to you.
Switch. Is that better? Pull this up closer. Maybe I just had it too far away. Okay. So the student outcome continuous improvement goal that centers around college, career, military readiness, this specific strategy dealing with certification said that we wanted to see an increase of our graduates from a baseline of 19.9% to see that increase by June of 2026 to 29.4%. And this is of students earning a certification prior to graduation. And so if you look back into the data, the class of 2018, which would have been the baseline year at 19.9%, that was included in the 2019 Texas Academic Performance Report. Skip forward to the next year, the class of 2019, that would have been in the 2020 taper, we went to 21.3. And then in the, and this is projections, I want to make sure I say that, and I put it up here on the, in the fall data that will be released for the Texas Academic Performance Report. It looks like we're going to be somewhere around 26% of our graduates in the class of 2020. So that's the increase that we're shooting for. Still not to the goal that the board set of 29.4, but moving in that direction and moving at an increased pace as far as that goes. Now, if you, I'll go to the next slide and we can kind of back up a little bit and look at where we've been and where some of the projections are. To go a little bit deeper into this year, that was the class of 2020, but this current year, the students that just graduated two months ago, we had 438 of those seniors, the students that graduated in the class of 2021, that earned at least one certification. So when you do the math, and this is not final, these are projections, it'll be based on PMS, the snapshot data, that number probably should be somewhere around 35% of these graduates in the class of 2021 that will have earned a certification as part of one of the CCMR indicators. And then overall, and just to make you aware of the certification, it's not only seniors that are earning these certifications, depending on the program of study and the coursework, some students, even at the sophomore and junior level, are beginning to earn certifications if they fit within that pathway. Because we do have certifications that stack one on top of the other, so you need to get an introductory certification to move on to more advanced certifications prior to graduation. And so we had 819 students, 9 through 12, that earned a certification this past school year. And I will tell you that some students earn more than one because we had right at 1,000 total earned, so you can see that several students earned two or three certifications during the course of the year. And then these are just some of the pictures. It's always better to show the students smiling because it's earning that certification and then getting the certificate to hold in their hand and take the picture. But these are just specifically the cosmetology, that was the written portion of the cosmetology license. That's Adobe Premier, I believe, in the middle, the students earning that certification. And OSHA 30 students, they're in the picture on the right. Going a little bit further, instead of that broad, is looking at the top certifications that our students in the district earned this past year. We had Patient Care Technician, which came out of our Health Science Program of Study, had 31 students earning that certification. OSHA 30, Occupational Safety and Health Administration, 30 R certification, had 82 students earning that, and that's primarily in the construction, welding, manufacturing fields of study. ASE Refrigerant and Recovery, that could be students in auto mechanics, auto collision repair, moving towards HVAC. With Tyler Junior College, we had 107 students earning that. Certified EKG Technician, which comes out of our Health Science and Anatomy and Physiology classes, we had 109 students earning that EKG certification. The Microsoft Office Specialist, that's the Business, Marketing, Finance, and Accounting Program of Study, had 151 students earning that certification. And then the NCCER Core Level 1, that's the National Center for Construction Education and Research. So that would be primarily the welding, manufacturing, construction science students, had 175 students earning that certification. And that is one that does advance and stack into those more specific areas. Just if you look at that list, that's about two-thirds of all of the certifications earned are on this list. But if you reach out into that other third, that other 330 or so certifications, it includes Emergency Medical Technician, Pharmacy Technician, Medical Assistant, Certified Nursing Assistant. It's a pretty broad range that covers the 27 programs of study. Make that up. And that is the information. I kind of went straight back to them. I think I just had a closing slide, but I will be glad to field any questions that you may have related to certifications.
So there's about 330 certifications that Tyler ISD offers. Is that what you said or how many?
Okay. So on the state list, it's, and that's actually being looked at and possibly amended, it's 200 total that are available. We had, I'm trying to remember the exact number. I want to say there are about 38 different and unique certifications that students earned. And those are very specific to our community and our region, the ones that we feel like are relevant for students in our area.
Good deal.
Yes.
Well, I'll open it up to the board if anybody has any questions for Mr. Brown.
I have one question. I want to know, do we have the data on students that didn't pass or didn't get certification, but they took the test?
We do have data on passing rates and students that do. It is an expectation for all of our students in CTE programming to at least attempt and move toward that, and that's information I can certainly share. We overall have a very high passing rate and we're fortunate, similar, I think, to EOC and STAR exams, that students that may take one of these tests in early spring generally have an opportunity then to come back again prior to graduation, prior to the end of the year to have a second opportunity. And we see a really high increase at that point of students that do pass, either on the first or second attempt. But I can get that information.
Get that to me and I'll shoot it out to the rest of the board after tonight.
Just a question regarding clarification. So we're saying that the students from the ninth to the 12th grade have an opportunity each year to take a certification test or?
When I say an opportunity, depending on the program of study, so if you were to take welding, for instance, a student that moved into that, that would go through the introductory to welding class, that could be where NCCER Core Level 1 is applied. But then they could go to advanced AWS welding at the junior or senior level in Level 3 and 4 classes. So the opportunities that are, some fields of study are very heavily laden in the senior year as a capstone course and program, so the students would go all the way through. A good example is EMT. A student that's going to stay in Health Science, freshman, sophomore, and junior year, is not going to be eligible to earn the Emergency Medical Technician certification until the spring of their senior year. There's really nothing in place up until that point. So it really depends on the individual programs of study.
Okay. Couple of things, Mr. Brown. Do you find that students that don't touch the CTC struggle with getting any type of certification?
Definitely. The vast majority of the certifications do come through the advanced CTE classes for students that do come to the current.
But for those students that don't travel to CTC where they've got a, for lack of a better term, a CTC, intrinsic teacher that's really going for that. So I guess that as we've built these high schools, those kids that aren't going over there, we've got to figure out a way to make sure that they're getting the opportunity and get excited about getting these certifications, whatever pathway they've chosen. Is that right in saying that? Okay. What about early college, high school? Any opportunities there in the future do you see?
I definitely see them in the future.
Okay. But right now, very limited on.
Their coursework basically has prohibited them from doing in the technical dual-credit side in our CTE coursework. It's been more of an academic focus toward that associate's degree, but there are opportunities to increase it. And I know we have also increased with Rise Academy. We have several students that have actually gone and attended and graduated from Rise that have been able to work on and achieve and earn their CTE certifications.
Yeah. The reason I ask that question about ECHS is that an associate's degree is, you know, the four-year degree is not the thing anymore. There's no doubt that gainful employment, a very, very high quality of life, very enjoyable quality of life can go through the associate's degree. So we're going to be looking for ways that we can pair up the great things that are happening at CTC in combination with the ECHS model.
Definitely.
Is that kind of like what a PTEC that you're seeing, some of that more urban districts are doing, is more of the technical dual-credit stuff that we're talking about here?
Our early college, high school model, the pathway to early college, high school is what PTEC is, to technical, early college, high school, is really what we're doing. It's what we're doing here. We don't call it PTEC, but it is. They're earning technical dual-credit, they're earning certifications in advancement towards an associate's degree. So if you were to find that, we just, we've done that internally and kind of organically, but that's what that is.
And the state's list, we used to have a problem with the state's list. Remember we, when this all first started, when we started figuring out how we can score on accountability in the big game that's laid out for us, sometimes as late as after we've already taken a couple of tests in February. Rojo's boy. We are starting to see now that the state's listening to educators in regard to saying what those certifications can mean to us locally as well, because it was a very tight list when it first started in the 30s, I believe. And you said it's grown?
It was 30s and it was 70 and then it's three years ago, it went to the 211.
Yeah. And the governor's been, the governor's been pretty adamant about this, that he wants portability that can cross state lines on these certifications. In other words, it's not just a, even though we listen to our Tyler constituents, there's no doubt about that, the portability to be able to go work in Louisiana or Mississippi or Illinois is something that the governor is very concerned about so that we can develop our kiddos to be competitive no matter where they land. We want them to stay in Texas, but we want their education to be able to be portable. Okay.
That's important question. In regards to, how are our freshmen or eighth graders being exposed to the program?
The CTE program as a whole, so our eighth graders take the College and Career Expirations class.
Okay.
Where they have an opportunity to look at all of the programs of study that are offered and match those up with their strengths and weaknesses as far as skill set and passion, see what their interests are. And that gives them an opportunity then working through their counselors to sign up for the appropriate introductory to CTE courses as freshmen. And then from there, it still continues to be an education and a counseling aspect to continue in that field of study. We do have students who take those introductory classes, Health Science to be an example, that find out about what all that entails. And they occasionally will say, that's not exactly what I thought it was, I need to switch gears. And they'll move into another program of study, but we want to see that happen early so we can get them the two or three years they need prior to graduating.
Okay. Question in regards to dropout rate. I was wondering if the kids that are potential dropouts are exposed to the possibility of certification somehow along the way?
Yeah, I think that's kind of captured on the Rise, starting to take more classes over there, our Rise Academy kiddos that are starting to take more classes over there. But as far as them exposed to any type of dropouts, you have any information on that?
I don't have specific data. We can pull that. I can tell you the students, obviously, because these are elective courses that they're choosing, you see a high correlation, students that stay in four years of a program of study, that stayed the course, earned the certification, and the high school diploma. And I would be glad to get that data and share it as well.
Yeah. Back to middle school, we didn't do it last year, but we typically have opportunities for our eighth-grade kids to travel over to CTC just to take a look at it. I mean, I know that's a very, but superficial things, shiny things tend to attract eighth graders. And so, but at the same time, I think that's something that, especially when we need to get them off campus during testing or something like that, is when we've typically done that. So it's not just a wasted day of them just sitting in the gym, but we actually get them over to the CTC to show them the great things that are going on over there.
Well, I'll say this much, I mean, every one of these certifications that I'm seeing in front of me is, offers hope and a glimpse into the future. And it's hard, I'm sure, like for me, you know, math and history, those are all interesting subjects, but you don't necessarily always see a future in that. If I'm, you know, ASE Refrigerant, I mean, that's something that's hands-on, that I'm learning, that makes me a more capable individual, whether I use it moving forward or not. I mean, these are real-life skills that, you know, I appreciate. So I'm proud of the job you're doing and the job that we're doing as a district with meeting our goal and reaching our goals and the job that we're doing for kids, you know, giving them real looks at what maybe they might be interested in the future and so they can form a career out of it potentially. And to get a jumpstart on that is pretty cool. So thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
I have one question.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry. In light of the question that we had earlier from the gentleman that spoke to us, do we have a way to have the data for people, kids that may have? have applied to colleges and not been admitted, or who were accepted at colleges and do have to take remedial classes? Do we have data on that?
We do. We have, that's separate from the certifications, but we do have data related to that college interest admittance and sustainability.
Okay.
That is tracked by Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board.
Okay.
It's pretty specific to Texas colleges. I don't know if, Rojo, do you know, Ron, Mr. Jones? Excuse me. Do you know, are they now including private schools in Texas? Have we broke, used to, you wouldn't know what happens with a kid that goes to Baylor. But we do know, at least for the state colleges and universities, those, those things, that data is tracked, Dr. Nation. I'm not sure about out-of-state. But I think they are now including the private schools in state. Is that right, Mr. Jones? Yeah, under an old accountability system, they used to not give you credit for kids, you got scored on higher ed placement. If a kid went to the United States Military Academy, you didn't get credit for him going somewhere. But they've kind of reconfigured some of that, and I do think that they're actually starting to include private universities as far as capturing some of that data.
We can add his information.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Appreciate you. Onto our next presentation is a Renaissance and STAR slash EOC summary.
So Dr. James Curden, Director of Assessment and Accountability, and Dr. Kristi Hansen, Assistant Superintendent for Academic Support, will provide this presentation. We told the board last time we'd give you some comparison data, even though it's been a very strange year, usually we have a lot of comparison data whenever it's, you know, peer groups and cohort data and things like that. But we've put together this report for y'all specifically as it pertains to Tyler SD in regard to STAR EOC and Renaissance testing.
So thank you, Dr. Crawford, and President Washman and the board. We appreciate the opportunity to talk to you a little bit more in-depth about the data that we sort of skimmed over last month, because we had just some basic state data, our district data last month. And this year, we have some state data, and we also wanted to talk to you a little bit more in-depth about that Renaissance data that we just kind of touched on last month, so that you could sort of see a little bit more about the details about that. So first, let's talk about this Renaissance data, because it really does project for us sort of where our kids are in comparison to other kids in the state, and with another assessment besides the STAR. So it kind of helps you see a more global picture, if you will. And what we wanted to do here is kind of let you see what the other districts look like that we talked to you about last month. Remember that Renaissance gave us six blind districts. They don't give us the names of the districts, but they do give us the demographics, so that you're able to see sort of how those districts compare to us demographically, with relationship to size, economically disadvantaged, and, and all of the various races as well. So as you can see, Tyler, we have twenty to twenty-four schools, that's what that first line is, and as you go across, that's how many total schools are tested in that district. Now, it doesn't mean that's how many schools maybe the district has, but that is how many schools tested, gave the Renaissance test. So there could be, for example, a magnet school in one of those districts that they don't give the test to, if that makes sense. So, and the same goes with enrollment. So that's actually how many students take the test. So as you see, the enrollment of Tyler obviously is more than eleven thousand, but we give the test to K through eight. So that's the number that Renaissance gave us, that's how many students actually took the test. Those are some important distinctions that you're looking at there. The same goes with the other demographics as you go through. So when you look at the number of schools that are Title One, well, obviously in Tyler, we have a hundred percent of our schools that are Title One, but they have eighty to ninety percent, even though we give the test to every student in K through eight. So that's, that's how they look at the demographics. Also, remember that this data, the PMS data was from the nineteen-twenty year, and then they took the PMS data from the other districts, and they got their comparison group to try to bring that around. So I believe at that time, we had two elementary schools that were not Title One during the nineteen-twenty year. Is that, I think that's right, is that right, Tasha? Okay. So that's probably why we have that eighty-one to ninety percent, because we had two elementary schools that were not Title One at that time.
And just real quick, for somebody who might, maybe has never heard of Renaissance or anything like that.
Yes.
That's the group we use to measure our progress throughout the year.
Yes.
And all these other districts are also districts that use Renaissance.
Yes.
And so they can kind of get some similar demographics and compare you.
Right, so a little background history there without taking up too much time. We used to use a different group, but we never knew where we stood in comparison to other Texas districts, because we could not get any Texas data. And it was really important that we knew where we stood in relationship to the Texas TEES, there's the Texas standards, not the common core standards. And we were struggling. Every time I would come before you, you would be like, well, how are we doing in comparison to others, Texas schools, and we didn't know. So we actually switched vendors so that we could have some data that really was more related to the students in Texas, and, and that's where we are with these districts. They have six districts that they've compared us to. And they, quite frankly, give our data to these other districts as well. Not all districts who take this particular assessment agree to have their data released. So we have agreed to have our data released blind as well to other districts if they want to, just as a courtesy, so they can compare as well. So just as a reminder, that now that you kind of know what those districts look like, this is where we stood at the end of the year when we took our assessments. And there are two different ways that, that we look at that data. One is the straight-out performance, how did they do on grade level? And one is how did, how many of the kids grew, got the, the appropriate amount of growth that we would expect kids to have in a year. So those are two different columns, and as you can see, we did very well. We were right up there with, in the, in the top ranking compared to all of those, those districts. Now, as you can see, maybe some of those districts, let's look at seventh grade, for example, they may not give Renaissance to the seventh graders. That might be why we only are compared to four other districts there. And as you get to the upper grades, then, you know, they, they certainly start giving it even less and less. The reason that they may not give that test to the younger ones in kindergarten and first is because the test is read to them. And actually, the test is read to them in second grade at the beginning of the year, and then by the middle of the year, they're taking it on their own, which is why by the middle of the year, y'all always see that dip, and we're all sort of like, oh my gosh, it's, everything's terrible in second grade. It's really because in first grade, I mean, in the first of the year, the test is read to them. The middle of the year, they have to read it themselves. At the end of the year, they have to read it themselves as well. So we really have a more accurate picture in second grade by the end of the year. And then here's, here's the math. We're going to talk about those seventh grade scores when we get to the, or state scores here in a minute. Any questions about the Renaissance and the ranking and how that all looks?
Do you know if these were compares, the comparison districts were districts that were in school?
We do not have that information. They didn't, they didn't tell us, they just get, but the Renaissance test, when some of those kiddos could have taken the test at home, that, so no, not necessarily. Those kids could have been at home, they could have been virtual learners this year. We have no way of knowing that.
I'm, I'm very pleased with the performance of the first, second, and third grade, since that's the foundational years. I know it's a very difficult year, but, you know, they ranked very well out of the schools that we compared to, so that's saying real good for the district at least.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Newsom. And it's always interesting, because when we start looking at those performance objectives that you set, sometimes we hit those targets, and sometimes we're a little bit off. We don't always know how accurate are we, but we know in comparison to other districts, we seem to be doing pretty well.
Yeah, and usually, on a normal accountability sequence, we know who our comparison districts are or comparison campuses are. They actually release those every year. We got those this year for STAR, yeah, I'm sorry, for STAR and EOC. We got those this year, but there's no data attached to them. So we usually know how we compare to folks that look like us. So we're trying to give y'all a little bit of, because I know we've all been wondering, and it's been eating us up ever since we went ahead and came back to school back in last November. Well, a lot of our kids were already back before that anyway. So we know we've been in school predominantly this last year, and we knew that that strategy was going to pay off. We just didn't have any data to prove to you when we had STAR EOC, so kind of giving you something here. It's not perfect, but it, at least it does provide some comparison in where we're going to be when we come out of this thing. What, what kind of chance do we have is, I think is the theme here.
Right, right. And, and like, like everyone else, we're sort of trying to put some pieces together, like Dr. Crawford said, to see if we can create, paint a picture that'll help us know where we need to go to get the kids there. So these are the math. Now, let's look at STAR. We do now have STAR data compared to state, so district compared to state.
Hey, go back, go back to the math one more time.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay. Let's take a long look at that one.
I can teach math, man, I'm telling you.
I know, I know.
That's great.
So these are our, our STAR, this is our STAR data compared to the state. And, you know, I mean, really, I feel very good about these scores. We were right there in the hunt, so, you know, we had some little dips here and there, but, but none of them are ones that I'm super concerned about. There were a couple that we'll look at in secondary that, that we'll talk about, but really, I, I feel really good about those scores. You know, fifth grade reading, we know exactly where, what that's about, and that, that really just is about us starting in 2019, doing those foundational skills. So it's going to take us a little, little while for those kiddos that we really maybe weren't, didn't have that strong foundational skills, phonics and phonemic awareness approach, and, and we just, you know, we're having to work really hard to get our kids up to par with reading in, in the older grades. So we're, you know, we're seeing the ramifications of that. And then here are the, here are the scores compared to the state. So, you know, automatically, even though we really want to focus on the positive, our eyes are going to go to that seventh grade math, there's just no way we cannot look at it. So let's talk about seventh grade math in our district. I've said this to you before, I'm not one that offers excuses, but I do like to give you all the information so that you know the whole picture. And the way we do middle school math in Tyler is different than any other district in the state, and nobody does it the way we do it. I'm not saying it's a bad thing, I just want you to know it's different. So when our sort of top performers go into middle school, they typically take, as sixth graders, they take the sixth and seventh grade curriculum together in one year, and they take the sixth grade math test, a STAR test. Then in seventh grade, our top performers take the eighth grade curriculum, on-grade-level curriculum, and they take the eighth grade math STAR test. So that means that you're, all your pre-AP kids, all your honors kids, most of those kiddos are taking the eighth grade math test, and they never take a seventh grade STAR test. Then when they get to eighth grade, they take the, typically, they take the algebra test. So no one else does it that way. Typically, what, what other districts do with honors students is every sixth grader goes into sixth grade and takes the sixth grade curriculum at an advanced level and takes the sixth grade test. In seventh grade, they take the combined seventh and eighth grade curriculum, and they take the seventh grade test. And then in eighth grade, they take algebra, and they don't take the eighth grade test. So that's just, we just do it differently. We've taught, and we do have two schools this year that are going to pilot doing it the other way, to see if we can get a stronger foundation in that sixth grade curriculum, which is so essential for the PSAT, ACT, ACT test, PSAT, SAT, ACT test. It's like, if you miss that sixth grade foundation, it's going to be really hard on the TSI test, the SAT, the ACT. So we're just, we have two campuses, Volter and Hogg, that are going to try sort of an honors track, where they're going to have kids take the sixth grade curriculum at a really intense level, every kid, even the honors kids, and then they're going to take the seventh and eighth grade combined, and take the seventh grade test, and then they're going to take the eighth grade algebra. That will help, we feel like that'll help the kids, and it'll probably help with accountability a little bit. So, and, so anyway, that's that seventh grade, those seventh grade math scores, that, that's really where we are with that.
Okay, so with what you just described, Dr. Hansen, to the board, even though those tenth grades, those, excuse me, those eighth grade math scores are plus-ten, plus-ten, plus-four above the state, you're still saying that your more advanced students in eighth grade are taking the algebra test?
Right, so those are your advanced seventh grade students.
Right. And your, and your eighth grade students?
Yes.
Okay. So in saying that, even though these, this, this data here, seventh grade showed us, we've got a pretty solid eighth grade math group.
Yes.
That can get kids performing a little, as far as the accountability goes.
Yes, yes.
If they're, if they're on the normal track.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, we have, it's solid.
That's not all, just, you're, who'd you say was taking this eighth grade test?
The six, the seventh, the seventh graders who were taking.
Yeah, but that's, I mean, we don't have hundreds of kids in advanced seventh grade mathematics. Got, well, maybe hundreds, I don't know. I don't know if that's right, but I'm just saying, it's not, it's, it's enough to tip the scale, but at the same time, we've got a ton of kids that are taking eighth grade mathematics that take up a lot of that sample. Is that right, Dr. Curden?
That, that's correct.
Okay, okay.
We just have to make sure with, with kids who may, maybe not ready for that, which is why we chose the two schools we did, that we make sure they get that solid sixth grade curriculum before we force them too quickly into that advanced track, because then the, then they won't do well on that eighth grade test in the middle of seventh grade. So, and that's what we found at, at a couple of the schools.
Yeah, and we've got to, I mean, you, you learn a lot by going through this as a parent, and I'm here to tell you that the old model of everything AP, I don't think that's the future. I don't, I'm not saying, I'm not discounting that and saying that advanced placement's not important, because it is. But I'm telling you, the, the path to dual-credit, and that's, and even starting in your middle school years, why are we in a hurry? You know, I'm just, I'm just going to make that statement here. We, we've kind of got to go back and make sure that we're doing the right thing for our kids as well, because the dual-credit way, the Tyler promise, early college high school, getting a year of TJC out of the way before you go off to four-year, there are so many advantages to that, that we need to make sure we're setting all of our kids up for success, and we're not just trying to speed them through mathematics, and we get this, get this performance that we've got here, because it does look ugly. I mean.
Well, and, and in the past, quite frankly, we've struggled in sixth grade math as well, and some of that's because we have, we're really trying to force two curriculums, even with our really, really bright kids, into one year. And so if we can sort of space that out a little bit, and, and help kids really get that sixth grade solid foundation, like you said, so that they're ready for dual-credit, they can pass the TSI, because they got that sixth grade and seventh grade curriculum. So I agree with you, there's no reason to just rush them through.
Yeah, some of us in here have been high school principals to where we used to walk kids across the street from a middle school to the high school, so that they could get geometry in eighth grade, right, Mr. Jones? And so that was where you were, that little cluster of kids would take, what, what they take freshman year after that? Algebra II, and then you'd take.
Cal.
Pre-Cal, and then you'd go Cal, Cal A and Cal B, their junior and senior year. That's some sharp kids to do that, but I'm just saying, we almost like we're trying to fit everybody to go through that one type of, of theory there with some of this stuff. So we've, we've got to go back and take a better look at that and see what fits now as opposed to what fit twenty years ago. Yeah.
Was the, oh, sorry, go for it.
Was the pilot program a result of this, or were you already working on that?
So we've been look, yes, we've been looking at it and really wanting. So we've been look, yes, we've been looking at it and really wanting to see if we could try to make sure that we got those kids that, that solid foundation. So we looked at last year's, not last year's obviously, because we didn't have it, but we've looked at previous data to see where our sixth grade kids were struggling the most. And we had kids that were doing advanced classes that weren't doing well on the sixth grade STAR. And we, as I've told you before, 85% of that sixth grade test is brand new content. It is, it is brand new content. And so we take kids, really bright kids, and we're trying to cram sixth and seventh grade into one year. So we chose those two schools because those are the schools where maybe our kids, we don't have as many kids who are participating in advanced academics of any kind, dual credit or whatever, when they get to high school. And it's because they don't feel confident in their skills. And we feel like if we could get solid sixth and seventh grade skills, they'll be ready to fly in eighth grade and on.
Let's also be honest here that when you start, by the time you hit secondary schools, which is sixth grade, you also have some folks out there that are GPA chasers and that know what the end game looks like. Mr. Brown's back there shaking his head. He's a former high school principal. And so when you, you have people that are on top of their game about that, they know they can clear out some of the requirements early. And yeah, you may not pass your STAR, you may not perform well on your STAR eighth grade test, but now you are, here you are. You can clear out some of that room of the state's required stuff so you can take more AP classes down the road and get that AP up. So there's some games that are played on this. We just got to do what's right for students. And I think y'all are on the right path for that.
Um, can you, well, I've got the slides right here, never mind. I was going to see if you could go back one slide. I mean, third grade math, you outperformed the state, fourth grade you did, fifth grade you did, sixth grade you mostly did, and eighth grade you mostly did. And it's just such an anomaly there in seventh grade this year in Tyler. So it sounds like y'all are kind of tracking on maybe what went on or what's going on.
And not to be a Debbie Downer about that, but I will say that sixth grade typically, we don't outperform the state. So this is a little unusual for us. Sixth grade usually is not as strong for us, and it's, I think it's because of the way we do those, that honor track. So yes, we do well, we do well, and then typically we sort of crash and burn in math in sixth and seventh grade.
Dr. Kirin, from your memory, wasn't seventh grade math the worst math in the state?
It's, it's, yes.
I'm just saying, the low, excuse me, the lowest performing?
Correct.
That's where every, a lot of folks saw a dip was in seventh grade math. Is that, is that correct?
When we talk math and the struggles in math, of all the grades, it's, it's seventh grade.
Right, but I'm just saying, this year in specifics, is, across the state, seventh grade math was the lowest performing?
Yes. Yeah, only, I mean, you can see 54% of students.
Yeah, it was a lower performing, excuse me, okay.
Right.
And returning back to, coming back to school, I feel like math had the biggest opportunity in coming back to school to improve, right?
Right.
Yeah, it really does, because they weren't, if you were an at-home learner, you weren't, it was pretty difficult to do math at home.
Yeah, math is hard to learn at home, for sure.
Which, you know, looking at everyone else talking about how the dips in mathematics across the board, state and nationally, we performed fairly well compared to that theory, because that's what's been in all the big publications was that math was what took the biggest hit during COVID. So.
Yeah, the research really indicated that once we get to about fifth grade math, most parents can't help their kids. Like they're, they're out. They're like, we have no idea. So.
Yeah, and it's, it's not so much the rigor of it, it's the how to get to that answer. The biggest arguments I've had at my kitchen table, I'm getting to the same answer, but I didn't go about it the same way. They, they've changed the way they teach mathematics. And I know some of us old geezers like me get mad about that and go, dead gummit, why don't they teach it the same way that I learned it? Two plus two to four, getting to four is the same way. So I had to really swallow my ego, my pride a little bit. My, my fifth grader was doing math better than I was. So anyways, we just got to get over some of those traditions that we have and those perceptions that we have about how to do mathematics when our teachers are doing a good job of teaching it apparently. And our students are doing a good job of executing it.
And then these are our high school scores. Certainly know that we've got to look at that English I and English II. That really boiled down mostly to the writing portion of the assessment. It just, I don't know if it was the online, them doing the writing online, or if it was just being out of, you know, the, it, it, I can't explain it. It just, you know, we'll fix it. That's all I can tell you.
We can't, I don't think we can say the writing online. Dead gummit, they write online all the time.
I know, but they don't.
They may not be using perfect grammar when they do it right here.
That's right. Because they do grammar and all of those, you know, you can't use text, you know, short.
Yeah, I know.
None of that counts.
Yeah, we've really got an instructional shift that's got to occur in regard to the writing, in regard to doing that on a tablet. Because the teachers are used to teaching it with, doing it by hand. And our students are used to the stuff in their, in their hand. There's got to, there's got to be a way to, to, to get that to work together, so.
And they're, they're changing a lot of those assessments anyway so that there, there may not be a specific writing portion of just the English. Like they'll be writing throughout all of the contents, more short answers and writing essays and those kinds of things like, like we, we all had to do in college in all the various courses. So they, there won't be just the writing portion in the English I and English II and fourth and seventh.
I'm sure we can have this conversation aside from here. How are they going to grade that? Are they, are you, are they going to use a lot of AI to grade that stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah, because I think TEA did recognize that going and getting scores off of Craigslist was not the way to go to score the writing portion of account, for, you know, when we have high stakes testing, which is, we were doing that, so.
That's what I did there, Finn.
Yeah, so, okay.
Well, I know that, I know that you can't always adequately express how important some things are for a kid that'll 10, 20 years later. But writing and articulation, I mean, you're talking about employable things, communication. And I know with my kids and with my mentee and with, you know, I'm most concerned about their ability to articulate through written text. It's very concerning to me when I see it. And I'm hoping that somehow we can overcome this generation's reliance on what they see in text messages or the easy stuff and, and how to overcome that and maybe have them get on the right track here.
Yeah, and the plea, as much as we love East Texas, we do have to work on that. And I had an eye-opening experience. I went to California for a little boys' trip for baseball. How many folks ask me, what part of the South are you from? I'm like, I don't even have an accent. That, that, we have to get back to that. You know, that was a big push for us when we rolled out our phonics initiative. And I think that's going to help over time. I'm not trying to erase the colloquial love of, of the twang that we have in our communication, but you're right.
My name was a two-syllable name growing up, you know, from a lot of people, but it's still, I still knew how to write.
Right.
You know, and I still have a pretty thick accent, but I knew how to write. And, and that is something that we, we need to teach, although phonetically it is, it is tough.
We're excited about getting our kids back into our, our classes day one so that we can get back to working on the great things we were doing back in 19 and 20 in regards to phonics, so.
I had a friend that used Chester drawers in a college paper at SMU. That was the first time he, he didn't know it was chest-up drawers. So anyway, it's East Texas. Okay, sorry, the diversion.
Okay, so on this last slide, we just wanted to provide some type of comparison relative to the state that wasn't just a comparison within this year. So the state provided some data to us where they broke down districts and scores based on the percentage of the year that was in person. And so we compared ourselves against other districts that were in person at least 75% of the year and how much regression really occurred. And so what the state gave us was just the increase in the percentage of kids that were not passing. So a high number here means you had a lot more, a lot higher percentage of students not passing. So you want a lower score to have less regression. And so we, we broke it down the same way the state gave us their data. You can see, we broke it down by ECODIS, the predominant races, and reading and math. And so essentially what it's showing, if you look at the reading, you can see the district numbers are similar to the state. So like for all students, we saw a 2% increase in the percentage of kids not passing the reading test relative to two years ago, whereas the state only saw a 1% increase. So we saw slightly higher increase in the percentage of kids not passing STAR, reading. If you look at math, we saw a 7% increase relative to 18, 19, but the state saw a 9% increase. So we actually had less regression than the state did, no matter what group you look at in math. Whereas reading, reading, we didn't, we didn't have less regression, but it was right there with the state. So we didn't experience a significant drop relative to the rest of the state. But with math, we did. We saw, we saw less regression overall.
Yeah, and the, we suspect, don't have a whole lot of proof of this because the state did not release who these districts were, correct, Dr. Kirin?
Correct.
So we suspect that these are districts that are smaller than we are, more than likely rural West Texas, rural East Texas, rural North Texas, maybe rural Central Texas, but as you get closer to the valley, they did come back to school. Maybe suburban Houston. 3A, 4A-ish, 5A-ish school systems. We still think we're the largest school system that, that brought our kids back before anybody else did.
I would definitely say one of them for sure, absolutely.
Yeah, one, if not, if not one of them. So in saying that, this is not compared to who we usually get compared against, which is normally an urban situation or mid-urban situation. So we feel like, because, you know, they didn't come back quite like we did, feel like we outperformed them fairly well. When you start hearing about some 20%, 20-point dips in regression at some of our urban peers, bless their hearts, we feel that we're in a pretty good situation to, to recover out of this, so. That's what we've got.
Yeah, you couple with the Renaissance data we showed of similar districts and
Sure.
you know, we're in a pretty good spot, I think, so.
Okay, any comments or questions?
I'd like to say, overall, I know that there was a lot of controversy about us returning to school and bringing all the students back to school, but I think it's definitely going to pay off in the long run academically for us as a district and our scores. And I think that's going to be proven.
Yeah. I agree. Okay, we appreciate y'all. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to the business legal finance consent agenda, I do not think anybody. Okay. Okay, we're going to pull item D. And I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve items A through G with the exception of D.
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. As have it, motion carries. Okay. And then we have item D, which is consider approval of Tyler ASD medical benefit plan. The employee premium rate changes for the plan year 2021, 2022. Tasha, do you want to address that for Mr. Newsom and the board, please?
Assistant, or excuse me, Deputy Superintendent, Chief Financial Officer, Tasha Bjork.
Okay, the, we're proposing a 5% increase. The past few years, we've done 10%. But our plan performed a little better this year. We're still having to drop quite a bit of money in it, but we are just proposing a 5% versus a 10% increase. And the premiums are still low relative to other plans.
Okay, and that, that's more or less the reason I want to pull it, because I know that there is an increase, but compared to the other plans that's out there, we are relatively still a little bit cheaper than some of the others.
Indeductibles are a lot lower, out-of-pocket, much lower.
Yeah, now TRS did come up with a, another type of plan because they've been hearing about this.
Similar to our Plan A, which we don't have very many people on Plan A because it's our priciest. But if you look at the other plans, B and the high deductible, we're way under them as far as the premiums go.
And I raise the question simply because I know when we have individuals that leave our district, I think sometimes they don't consider the benefit package as part of their salary. And I think sometimes they are surprised when they compare it to the other districts when they look at their overall income once they transfer to those districts. And I think it's important for, for our employees to be aware of that. It may be an increase, but still, compared to some of the other districts, our premiums are a little bit lower.
We're quick to point that out.
Ma'am?
We're always quick to point that out.
That's good. Just want to remind them.
And we use it as a recruiting, a recruiting tool also. We have a schedule where we compare our premiums and our out-of-pocket and deductibles, and it's used as a recruiting tool.
So any teachers that's considering leaving TASD should definitely consider that.
And sometimes they're on their spouse's insurance.
Right, right, and, well, still.
Yeah, no doubt. If anybody's watching, you know, if we need to do a, if they ever do consider another position, if they want us to do a workup on, say they get offered $1,000 more to go work in XYZ ISD, we'd love to sit down with them and do a workup of what that will actually mean to them once the TRS active care starts hitting them in some shape or form as opposed to staying here. So we will offer that up to them as well.
Great. Okay. Well, unless there's any more comments or questions, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion on item D.
I move that we accept item D.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, all opposed. Okay, as have it, the motion carries. Moving on to our curriculum instruction and consent agenda. We have A through N here, but I do think item J maybe is something we're going to table.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that we table item J until the future.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. As have it, the motion carries. We'll table that and, and come back to it at a later date. So now we have items A through N with the exception of J. Do I have a motion on those items?
Motion to approve curriculum instruction consent, items A through N with the exception of J.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Do I have a second?
I second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. As have it, and the motion carries. Moving on to superintendent staff reports, we have a return to school report.
Yeah, compared to this time last year, we do have a, a lot leaner return to learn, return to school presentation for y'all, mainly just to get this in front of y'all so you can ask questions about us coming back to school. Under some restrictions that we have now as far as executive orders, we finished the, the school year that way. And then as we roll into a new school year and what we're actually planning on actually having. So this is the return to school update. We actually are going to post this online. That is a federally, excuse me, a federal requirement so that we can access ESER funds. Remember the ESER funds that we've had three or four presentations? Mr. Bidder's done a good job of that since April, March, when we started figuring out that this was coming down the pike. It was a big part of the legislative session as far as budget goes. It's a big part of our plan over the next three years to get kiddos the opportunity with more time with instruction, more SEL support as well. It'll also, also help with behavior issues on campuses, along with additional tutorial requirements that are coming out of House Bill 4545. So this is an actual requirement of that. We want to make sure that y'all saw this and y'all had any questions before we actually post this online as we go forward. So here's the return to school update. Obviously, we're going to continue within school learning. That is something that the CDC has recommended to occur. We do have our one-to-one devices, as opposed to this time last year, we were relying upon Blade to provide some at-home learning for kiddos. We did the best with what we had as far as deploying what we had, while our device. We did the best with what we had as far as deploying what we had while our devices were stuck in, I don't know, the Pacific Ocean or in Long Beach or somewhere like that. We actually got those in the spring, got those out. We'll have over 18,000.
18,600.
We have 18,600 devices that can go to the district now. Thank y'all board for providing that. Thank you to your congressmen. Thank you to your state legislators for making sure that they had the resources there and the system set up for us to be able to access that. So one-to-one is not going away. It's going to be a vital component of our instructional program as well as the Canvas Learning Management System. We talk about college readiness. That is something that we will continue to utilize from here on forward as far as our learning management system goes. It may not always be Canvas, but certainly that's what we've, we're committed to right now. That is something that's a holdover from the last return to learn plan that we had. Tyler Asti grading a policy applies in regards to the same instruction that we have. We're actually bringing everybody back. We're not actually having virtual opportunities anymore. That'll be done, you know, if there's some, if there's some special education things that are going on there, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Dykman, but that will be done through homebound services. Is that correct? If there are some actual, if some attested, medically attested situations, we can take care of that through normal special ed arting processes. Is that correct? Okay, good. Next slide. Health and safety protocols, you know, students and staff monitored for infectious disease daily. We went through an entire year of that at home, at school. We were, we had a heightened sense of importance in regard to that. We're going to continue to do that. It's just good practice, and we had a little bit of that practice going on before, when we had flu and RSV, common cold, things like that, that could be infectious from one person or the other. Want to make sure we do that. We're still going to encourage our parents to screen students' health before sending them to school. I do that with my own children. I've done that with my own children for the past 20 years of sending them to school. I hope that all parents realize the importance even now that we are still monitoring that, and that is very important that we do that for the health and safety of our students and our staff and our teachers as well, and our community. We encourage our parents to update their student's medical history inside of the registration system. If you've already registered your student, make sure you communicate with your nurse if your student is hyperallergenic during certain times of the year. Poor OAJ, born in Baylor Scott &amp; White there in Waco, Texas, she moved here to East Texas as a four-year-old. She hadn't whipped it yet. I usually have, I'm okay with allergies because I grew up with inhaling this gold East Texas pollen. But at the same time, we encourage you that because there are some of the, we have some similar symptoms in regard to COVID versus allergies, and we certainly don't want to be panicked. We don't want to send kids home whenever they have some very typical allergic issues, especially in the months of September, October, even November, and even in the spring as well. So please update your student's medical history so we kind of know what's best for your student while we are in loco parentis. A little Latin there for you. Face coverings are optional for students and staff, and I want to be very clear, from the dais, as the chief executive officer of this school system, folks that want to shield up and continue to mask up, that's their baby. They have the freedom to do so, and we're not going to hold it against them, and we're certainly not going to de-emphasize their, their desire to want to be safe and protect themselves. At the same time, if you don't want your child to do that, if you're a teacher or staff person that's chosen not to do that, the same thing there. We don't want to be critical of them either. So I wanted to make sure that we said that from the dais. There will be no bullying going on in regard to masking or shielding of people. We're just not going to participate in that. It's still out there, and there's a little bit of hesitancy, I understand. Some parents don't have hesitancy, and so we're going to honor both of those. You know, that's something our country really needs to do right now is to make sure that we understand that people have a choice and have the freedom to do what they feel is right for their kiddos and for themselves. So we're going to encourage face coverings if you want to use it, shields as well, and we're going to do the same thing with our staff as well. And I think that's it, and so y'all can kind of start peppering us with questions about return to school. I've got my team here, the folks, a lot of folks in this room helped put these plans together a year ago. Here we are again as we get ready to return to, to, to school in person again for this school year.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any comments or questions for Dr. Crawford on returning to learn, return to school?
Supporting events and spectators, 100%?
100%. We still may do some like ticketing online, some things that we saw were pretty effective for us in regard to the management of personnel, especially whenever you start talking about there may not be quite as many ticket takers that want to work these days. So yes, we're going to be sporting events in person as long as the data and the science allows us to do so.
I saw where the custodians will be cleaning restrooms and things twice a day. Do we have enough custodial staff to take care of the, the needs of the, every school?
So I'm looking back there at the director of facilities, Tim Loper, he's shaking his head up and down. I wouldn't suppose you know how many custodial vacancies we have right now, Mr. Loper?
Well, I think we have nine.
We have nine district-wide?
Yes.
Okay, so certainly would encourage anyone out there that's watching right now that would like to support your local school, school system and get paid in doing so and work on great campuses in service of our kids to contact us and, and give us a shot. It's a great place to work, Tyler, Texas is, and we'll, we'll pay a competitive salary as we go about that. But yes, ma'am, we do have inside of the plan, we're going to make sure that we continue to do a lot of the same practices that we have. We may adjust some of those, and the frequencies may not be quite as, as heavy as they were. For instance, on our school buses, we are still going to fog every day. Is that correct? That is correct. Okay, good. So that's, that's something that we, that we were doing prior to COVID actually hitting us. A lot of, some of these things that we were, but it's really enhanced when we had to actually publish those things as well.
Anybody have any more questions or comments? Thank you for that. I know that, that everybody's looking forward to a school year that looks a little, little more normal than it did. I think everybody's had ample time to go get vaccinated if they so choose, and, and those who didn't are still willing and comfortable and doing what they do. So I'm ready to get back to school and, and do what we do best, educate kids.
Absolutely, absolutely. And, you know, I was talking to George Roberts with Net Health, and, you know, vaccinations are available for, for 12 and up. And again, like you just said, Mr. Washman, if you choose to do so for your child or for yourself, we're about a month out. So if you want to be vaccinated prior to the start of school, now's the time to go get that done, considering the timeline it takes to be fully vaccinated. So if you haven't done it yet, and that's what you're choosing to do, now's the time to do that before the start of school.
Thank you very much, and I think we have another report on cooperative purchasing fees.
That's correct. We don't have a slide for this as far as a slide deck goes, but every year you have to actually present this. It does not take board action, it's just actual report. It's from a legislative session, it's now in the codified in the education code, to where we actually present to the board the actual fees that we use for cooperative purchasing. As you can see in your packet on page 73, there are no fees for the nine or so, 10 or so actual co-op groups that we actually use. Again, purchasing co-ops are designed for large bulk processing, state competitive pricing, to where folks like state agencies and education, local education agencies, the I E. school districts can actually participate in, and buy resources and products for the, for the education of students, I won't say at a low cost, but at a competitive cost. There's your report.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any comments or questions on that report? Seems fairly self-explanatory. Okay, we have two discussion items. We have a first reading of the Student Code of Conduct. And then, yeah, let's handle that.
So the board, just for transparency, the board was provided this actually electronically today?
Today, a hard copy tonight.
And a hard copy tonight because of when our board meeting fell versus when Tasby actually rolled out some surprise changes on us, the back end of last week, Mr. Jones, is that correct? Thursday, so we published our board packet on Thursday. Some of you don't get the actual packet in your, in your folder. We'll, we'll work on that, Ms. Harrison. But at the same time, we want to make sure we got that to you tonight. It is a first reading. After looking through this, a lot of thus's and thou's and shall's and these and those have been inserted. Unlike other legislative years, it's very surprising, there's not been a whole lot of changes that I can tell, Mr. Jones, unless you want to brief the board on anything you saw.
No, nothing, uh, no, no.
Okay, good deal. So you're more than welcome to look through that. We'll actually have a second reading at the board workshop in early August.
Is that right? Okay.
Before school starts, because we want this in place before the school, before school starts. You know, seven or eight years ago, we weren't getting this thing approved until after school started, but we want to make sure, it's been our charge every year to get this to y'all prior to the first day of school.
It does make sense to have the Code of Conduct in place before school starts.
Well, you can always act on last year's Code of Conduct, but we want to make sure there's any new changes that's in, that's in front of y'all before.
Very good. And then the TIS, TSD Foundation Board. Reverend Hager represented us on that board for a good while, and since he rolled off the board, we do need somebody on the board to serve in that capacity. And I do think that we have a taker. Ms. Yvonne Atkins, would you be willing to serve on the Tyler Asti Foundation Board?
Yes, of course.
She said yes. Okay.
It's always the seat to the left of the superintendent.
Well, no, I'm sure you'll do a great job on there, and, and then we also have an internal audit committee opening, and I think, I think Ms. Lindsay Harrison is going to be the board representative, the second board representative to, to fill out the internal audit committee. So I knew I had to act on that, Jan, we got you one, and Lindsay, Jan Coker, our internal auditor. So moving along to future business, we do have, August is just around the corner. Board workshop, school is cool, graduation, a couple of grand openings that I'm really excited about.
Me too.
Man, 2021, I think, what, 2017 bond, and now we're finishing out our two beautiful high schools. And, and then we have the first day of school on August 16th and a regular meeting after that. So a lot to look forward to and a lot to be excited about this year. Having said that, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
I move that we adjourn.
Okay, do I have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries, eyes have it, and the meeting is adjourned.